Attending, I know it takes time out of your day, but I think we have some very important stuff to talk about. So I'm gonna turn it over at this time to Kelly.
All right. Thank you all for joining. I feel very special to have all of your attention on our lovely housing conversation. We have been talking what feels like ad nauseam about the housing conversation in Lebanon for the last couple of years with the start of the Housing Production Strategy, which we have adopted and has been concurred with through the state. And now we are in the process of implementing it. As part of the Housing Production Strategy, we have identified several different types of new housing that Lebanon is having the desire to see included in its toolbox to allow for new types of housing in different income levels, to allow for, let's just say, the new people who want to move out of their parents' basement into a new home and having people be able to have all the different types of housing and upward mobility and not just apartments being able to be built in our community as well. So the opportunity that we have in front of us is to develop a new development code to implement some of these new housing opportunities. And through a grant through the Department of Land Conservation Development, we have brought on a consultant group to help us implement some of those new code changes to bring on these new housing strategies. So we have Darcy and Brandon with us. We have started the process of these code changes. As part of it, we have developed a project advisory committee. That project advisory committee is made up of city staff, city council members, planning commission members, members of the development committee, business owners and residents of our community to help us sort of gauge whether or not we're rightsizing the code, whether or not the code is going to help us develop the type of housing that ultimately our community is going to want to live in and also meet the goals of what the Housing Production Strategy is going to try to achieve. And so we had our first project advisory committee meeting that is sort of setting the ultimate goals of what we're trying to focus on. And the goal of the meeting today is sort of provide a readout of that meeting to make sure that we are on the right track and that we're rightsizing the project for the goals and what we are able to achieve under the grants and the time that we have allotted for it. We do only have until basically next May to be able to achieve this project under the grant. So we are on a pretty tight timeframe. But we do have a great team that we're working with to be able to get that done. So I am gonna stop talking and let them talk. So I'm gonna introduce Darcy and Brandon from MIG and they're going to walk us through what our next steps are.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Kelly. Everyone can hear me okay? A little nod. Great. Thank you so much for having us. I, as Kelly was talking, I was thinking about this imagery of the Olympics and sort of the handoff of the baton and some of those races. And I'm thinking, you know, we now are kind of continuing your, your conversation, but we're getting closer to the end of the race, if you will. Kelly talked about, you know, having a defined timeframe for this project. It's not a huge rush, but we do have a kind of an end, end date in mind. And we are really getting more, closer and closer to implementation, implementing some of the things your Housing Production Strategy pointed to the community wanting to, to have. So that's-
Darcy, really quick, we have a train going by, so I'm gonna put you on hold.
Excellent. Hey, Brandon, you wanna go ahead and advance to our, our next slide, just a little preview of what is a very short agenda. We wanna make more time for your questions or feedback than us talking, but we just wanna get kind of a grounding to what we're up to with this project. Kelly is part of our project management team, so you'll hear us referring to that kind of group of people. That includes city staff, MIG, you know, housing experts, including Brandon, and kind of the rest of our team back at home, as they say, and DLCD, and particularly Patrick Wingard, who's your regional representative. He is always available to us. And he has his housing team in DLCD. So we've got, we've got a good group of people to kind of work through some of these, these issues. I'll go to the next step. We'll get to project background. So Kelly's kind of already explained what we're, what we're up to. And go to the next slide, Brandon, unless, there we go. We really are building off of your Housing Production Strategy recommendations. Again, this is grant funded, so you're getting some assistance from the state. They also really want everyone, all jurisdictions, to do their very best to accommodate populations, housing, people who need housing, again, as Kelly said. And we're really focused on the development code, so your development regulations. So we're really looking at how do your rules and regulations impact housing availability. So that's what we're all about. We will also be looking into some fairly modest comprehensive plan policy updates. And so I think we can go to the next slide as far as project objectives. Again, touching the comprehensive plan only to really strengthen it and to make sure that you have language that supports the type of regulations that you're strengthening or adding to your development code. Just to kind of preview, you know, you are looking at a legislative update. So those amendments go through your legislative process, both to adopt updated comprehensive plan policies as well as your development regulations. So the next slide basically is, is a very simplified schematic. It's not complicated, just this project schedule. It's about a year long from when we were starting off the scope for this project with Kelly to the time that you'll see underlying, strikeout language that you will be considering for adoption in the spring. It's a fairly technical exercise. We did start with an audit of the policies of your adopted regulations, of the recommendations from the Housing Production Strategy, just to kind of get us grounded. Kelly gave us a lot of good information to, to make sure that we, we knew what we were dealing with, with Lebanon's code. We are in the time period now where we are sharing back out what we as kind of housing experts have discovered and discussing that with the advisory committee. As Kelly said, we've had one meeting already, discussing that with you in this kind of check-in work session. And then we'll have, we'll move into actually drafting the language. And there'll be another couple of meetings with the advisory committee so they can help us kind of right-size requirements to Lebanon. And at the end of that draft code period where we have, again, actual language, we'll be coming back and checking in with, with you. So the next slide, Kelly's already described the composition of your advisory committee. It's a good representation, I think, of, of your community, but really a lot of technical expertise as well. So we, we wanna get to hearing from the, the folks that implement your requirements, that apply your development code, that interpret it. We're trying to kind of minimize the interpretation, as you'll understand, one of our goals is to make your code very clear and understandable for all users. And yeah, we're kind of looking for that technical expertise to make sure that we've got a good, a good first draft for you to look at later in the project. There are notes from the meeting in your packet, and you also have a couple of representatives from the council and planning commission who can share their thoughts from that meeting as well. So that's a lovely kind of cross pollination, if you will, just keep everything on track. We will talk a little bit more tonight about some of the feedback that we received from that first, that first discussion. But I think, you know, we particularly got some good information, some good feedback around parking, around cottage cluster requirements. Again, I'll turn it over to Brandon soon, and he'll, he'll get into a little bit more detail about what we heard so far. So the comprehensive plan recommendations, that's the next slide. And, you know, the, the good news is you've got a good policy basis already. We're not looking to completely overhaul or do a lot of messing around with what you already have. What we do wanna make sure is that we have kind of the language, particularly for the newer housing types that, that we're either modifying or creating new requirements for, that that language is consistent in your policy, your policies as well, your housing policies. So a little bit of a refresh and consistency kind of exercise there. So that gets us to sort of our, our start, if you will. We have a lot of good information coming from the Housing Production Strategy. You all have definitely discussed why these actions came forward in, in your HPS. So we're just bringing those into the actual requirements now. So we have kind of cross-referenced where those actions live in, in your Housing Production Strategy, in the memorandum that you have in your packet. Again, that's just the grounding. We're, we're pulling these forward. So the next slide, we described to the advisory committee how we were organizing our approach. There are a lot of recommendations. We wanted to make sure that we had time for and we're really putting our focus on those areas that were the highest priority for the city. And so, again, with, with staff help, with Kelly's help, we did a little bit of organization. And on those higher priority recommendations, we put more information in providing you with background and options, particularly showing you how other jurisdictions have approached very similar requirements. So you kind of have an idea of what has been working out in, in, in real life. And then some, you know, idea of kind of where to start when you wanna tailor those requirements to Lebanon. So, um, let's see, we really did focus on the higher priority items with the PAC, the Advisory Committee. And I'm gonna turn it over to Brandon. He's gonna get into some of those details. And we will, as I said, have, have time for questions, concerns, any kind of feedback you would like to provide us tonight would be great. But we can at least share out what we were hearing, what we discussed and what we were hearing from the advisory committee.
I think really quick, too, when you look at the code review and the recommendations, you see the higher priority recommendations and the other recommendations. This is just a portion of the Housing Production Strategy. And even when you just look at the high product, the high priority recommendations, that's only a portion of what we were originally trying to anticipate getting done in this first cycle. Just a reminder, we have eight years to get through all of this. And so we're trying to figure out what we can bite off in the first go of it. And so we're trying to right-size what we can get through in this first cycle, what we're gonna be able to get done with consultants versus what we're gonna be able to do with staff time versus what we're gonna do in the next cycle of grant cycles through DLCD. So we just sort of wanna make sure that our high priority recommendations align with what council and this planning commission are, are good with. That, that is what has come out of staffs and the, the project advisory committee's recommendations. And so that's, that's really the crux of what we're wanting to make sure you guys are good with that work program, basically. And then we can get into the nitty-gritty of, of what we're talking about as well.
Kelly, is there any way to shorten up that timeline?
To shorten up the eight years?
No, going from 24 to 25.
No, sir. Unfortunately not.
I remember when I first came on, there was some, I don't remember what the program was, but it was something like this. And I was lost. I couldn't figure out what was going on.
Right.
Be the same way for the new people that are coming in.
Right. So it, this is an incredibly technical process to develop the, yeah, to, to develop the code. It, it will take a, a technical time process for our consultants to, to draft the code, for staff and the project management team to, to evaluate it and determine whether or not we think it's right-sized, to have it go through the project advisory committee and go through.
It's work overtime.
It, it will take, it will take that time. And then to go through the, the public hearing process alone. So yes, there will be new people on council and there may be new people on the planning commission. But between myself and, and the consultants, we will do our best to make sure that any new people on board will be able to understand what we're working through.
Eight years start April?
The eight years started last March. No, sorry, this February. Yeah. When it was, when it was confirmed with DLCD is when the eight-year timeframe starts. So it was just this February. So we, we still have a full eight years of what we're going through. So.
Lot to it.
So that's eight years to go through this Housing Production Strategy. And then we're going to adopt a new Housing Production Strategy, which will take another eight years. This is a forever process through the state. We will always be doing this.
It might not live that long.
Correct. But this Housing Production Strategy will be eight years. Then we'll have another one, which will be eight years to implement, and another one for eight years to implement. But we will always be working on this until the state identifies that we have solved the housing problem, which, depending on who you talk to, will never happen. So we are going to be in this forever. So buckle up. But for the priorities, we just wanna make sure that we're rightsizing those priorities. And then we can make sure that we're moving forward in the way that we think that we're moving forward correctly with. So the, the high priorities that you guys saw on the previous slide, does everybody agree that, that we're moving in the right direction with that?
I have three things.
Okay, Dave.
As far as the manufactured homes go, you know, I love sweet homes, but I don't have parks lining your main street. Tiny homes on wheels, supposedly, I don't know how they can be turned, turned hose. It seems like a cramped area. This is my thought on the whole thing. I wouldn't, as, you know, and I've been a landlord. I would not wanna make somebody live away, live in something that I wouldn't live in myself. I don't think I'd wanna live in a little permanent state. And the other thing, all these apartments that we're building, if we keep up the pace that we're going, we're gonna look like Wilsonville. That scares me. Because I've been here for 35 years. I love the small feel, small town feel of life. And it just scares me to think that we might look like that. But anyway, those are just thoughts. Maybe it'll open up a discussion.
So for the manufactured home park standards, just for clarification, we already allow them in our city. This is simply a code cleanup to comply with state law. We're, we're not trying to expand. We're not trying to do anything other than code compliance for state law purposes. So that's, that's one of those of a staff recommendation of let's comply with law. The tiny homes on wheels would be a alternative to allow for accessory dwelling units, which are already authorized as small dwelling units, not intended to be primary dwelling units, which is what was authorized as part of the Housing Production Strategy. And your comment about Wilsonville is a personal comment. I don't know how to respond to that.
Kelly, I have a question. I remember most of our discussion where these bullet points come from, but the third point on high priority recommendations, remove infill development standards. Could you clarify that?
Yeah, so that is part of the Housing Production Strategy. It was a minor comment, and this is really a code cleanup concept. In our development code right now, we have standards for, in existing development areas for properties that are one acre or less, there is a very convoluted code section of matrix and code standards that basically say, if you're in an area that's pre-existing, you have to meet a higher standard of development threshold than if you were a greenfield on a perimeter area of, of the city. You have to meet design characteristics that are compatible with surrounding neighborhoods that we don't apply to any other type of development, right? And that is not clear and concise housing standards. So it doesn't meet state law.
Okay.
And so the, the option is go through the process of modifying those or simplify the code and just simply remove it and allow for any property within the city to follow the same zoning standards as every other property within the zone.
Right, okay.
And so that's what the, the options are on the table.
My question, I've had this as we've gone through this. I understand that we're trying to clean up code. I understand we're following laws. But what, what are we doing by our own numbers here? Our, our biggest shortcoming in housing is higher-income, single-family dwellings. The second biggest is one step down. Forty-nine percent of the shortage we have in our housing market right now is people looking for single-family homes that are making a decent living. How are we addressing that in this? We're, I, I understand that we're not saying people can't. We're making it awfully attractive for people to put more units in smaller spots and charge more for them rent-wise, is what it feels like to me.
So I think that the small lot, single-family developments addresses the homeownership opportunities for single-family homes.
And maybe I misunderstood last time, but if we do that same move, that doesn't stop somebody from putting a duplex on that same piece of property.
State law would never allow us to stop that. Standard development practices would generally preclude it, though.
I'm just going dollars-wise in my head. If I have a 5,000-square-foot lot and I used to be able to put a duplex on it and charge two rents, and now I can put four, that sounds a pretty, a pretty enticing to somebody who's just developing. And we have a lot of that going on. It's why we have the apartments we have, to some extent.
I, I think I'm, I'm confused by that math.
Well, what's gonna stop, maybe it's a, you, I believe you said that somebody, if we could say, hey, this is what, we wanna make our single-family lots 2,500 square foot, somebody could still put a duplex there.
So, yes, but that's where, and, and we can get into the, the development code standards where we were getting into it with the project advisory committee, by putting in height restrictions.
So we can get, we can policy ourselves away from that being able to happen.
You can make it harder. Yes.
Not impossible to hard.
You can make it not impossible.
I get it. I'm not trying to corner you.
But it's not practical, right? You're not generally going to see it. It is not going to be the standard form of development that you're going to see. When you're gonna see the smaller lot, single-family homes with 2,500-square-foot lots, you're going to see a larger propensity of single-family homes being built. Will somebody try to build a duplex? There's a possibility, right? I'm not gonna tell you that it's not gonna happen. But you're not gonna get the yield out of it, right, than a 5,000-square-foot lot where that's perfectly built for a, for a duplex size, right? Which is why you're seeing so many of them built. But you're not gonna get that same yield. You're not gonna, it's not the, the design, it's not the threshold, it's not, you're just not gonna see it as, as easily. And that's where our development code is designed to meet the design for a single-family home. That's where we right-size it. That's where we put the height standards. That's where you can use different tools to try to deter it, in a way.
But when we get to the next one of these, I better not be having duplexes.
I'm not guaranteeing you anything, Dave. But, but to, to get to your point of the Housing Production Strategy and how it's aligning with the housing needs analysis and, and our housing capacity needs, we need new single-family homes. But we need single-family homes that the incomes of our community can afford. The Housing Production Strategy has identified the smaller lot, single-family homes as a tool to try to accomplish that. And that's why that's been identified as a higher priority.
Are the SDCs the same?
It depends on the size of the prop.
From a developer's point of view, I'm going, wow. You know, I can make more money. I don't have to live in Lebanon. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be living in Salem.
So I would encourage everybody at the table to, I understand that developers have a, a need to make a profit, but developers are also there to make a housing type that people are going to live in. And there are many different housing types out there. There is a large, single-family home. There is a small, single-family home. There is a town home. There is a duplex. There's apartments. There are many different types of housing units out there. And developers make many different types of housing units, right? So we are creating code opportunities for different types of housing units. And that's the goal of the code. Beyond that, you have to accept the fact that the market is going to bear what the market is going to bear. And that's the reality of it. And, and we create the code to try to create the character that Lebanon wants. So a height standard and setback standards and lot coverage standards and parking standards to develop the type of housing and parking that we want to see in our community. And you let the market do what the market is going to do. But do you want to see small, single-family lot development in the city? The Housing Production Strategy has already said that you want to see that occur in the city. So the next step is, what does the development code look like? Do you wanna see cottage clusters? The Housing Production Strategy has already said that the city wants to see cottage clusters. What does that look like? So the, the question before the city council and the planning commission right now is, we've already decided as part of the Housing Production Strategy that these tools are going to move forward. Which ones do we wanna focus on? And how do we want to develop those through this next process, in this process? And then as we develop those over this next year, we're going to make sure that it's going to be right-sized for Lebanon. But you can't regulate out a developer. You, you, the, the market is going to do what the market is going to do. And you can't, you can't regulate to the lowest common denominator of a developer greed. You have to regulate to what we want to see in Lebanon. And sometimes you're gonna get a greedy developer, but you're also going to get housing for our community. for our community.
And, and if I could interject, I think one thing that you said, Kelly, was about housing choice, and it is a little bit interesting when you get to kind of the implementation stage of a very long, long-term discussion about housing availability and, and need in a community such as yours or any community. You've, you've winnowed down a lot of the, the choices or the discussion points. It doesn't mean you can't expand them back out and talk about, talk more about the policy for the city. But as Kelly said, we're, we're kind of getting to the point where we are trying to implement some of those policy statements, some of those direct, some of that direction coming from your housing production strategy. And your housing production strategy, they wouldn't have explored all those strategies in that document, or you wouldn't have explored all those strategies in that document if you didn't have a housing need, right? And it goes back to we, not just, oh, just, you know, objectively, you need a bunch of houses. It's really like, no, you, you have a population. You're preparing for a population within a long-range time horizon, say 20 years. And, and they have some idea about what those income levels are, what the demographic makeup is, you know, people aging, people coming in, people being born, et cetera. You know, so that, that, that body of work is really showing you where your deficits are, if you will. And so now in this high priority recommendations, it's not that you're not allowing for or providing for a single family, larger lot, single family. It's just that you've done that historically well enough that we're not focusing on that now. We're really focusing on new and different housing types, types you haven't necessarily provided the space for or the regulations for. So that's really where we're, we're really looking at sort of what you don't have, not what you're doing well or what you already have, if that makes sense. So I think with that, if, if, by your leave, if we could just kind of go through some of the, the slides, again, this is very much what the advisory committee was also discussing and grappling with. So we can, can share out, you know, some of those things with you and, and continue on with this conversation for as much time as you have.
Thanks. I think that's my cue to take it over. And I'm Brandon, by the way. I didn't get to properly introduce myself at the beginning, but yeah, I'm, I'm part of the consulting team, and I've already talked to some of you who attended the advisory committee meeting. So as Darcy and Kelly mentioned, it's, I think it's good that we kind of have that bridge between the city council and planning commission and the advisory committee. So this, to some of you, this is kind of repeat information, but we'll just kind of go over this at a high level, some of it where we've already kind of discussed here already today. But yeah, so as Kelly and Darcy mentioned, we're just really focusing on those high priority recommendations that came out of the housing production strategy and what is the best way to implement those. So that's what we're doing here through this project. So as you know already, one of those high priority recommendations was to encourage small lot, single family homes. And that was largely helping this, intended to help the city meet the, the need for lower to middle income home buyers who, who may, may not be able to afford, you know, the larger, single family homes or even mid-sized, single family homes. So it's kind of targeting that demographic. So we had some discussion with the advisory committee about what sort of development standards and guardrails we should consider for this housing type. So we talked a decent amount about parking, how many off-street parking spaces should these small lot, single family homes require. Ultimately, we landed at requiring two off-street spaces per small lot, single family home, which is what the city already requires for your traditional, single family homes. So it's really not much of a change there. We talked a bit about common open space requirements, and I should also mention, these are also discussions and considerations that were had during the housing production strategies. That's why we're kind of revisiting all of, all of these different types of development standards. So yeah, again, from the housing production strategy, there is some consideration over whether a small lot, single family subdivision should have common open space, private, common open space, that is, requirements. And we deliberated a bit on that at the advisory committee meeting last month, and most folks agreed that, that, that might not be necessary to require common open space. And we also talked about what is the appropriate unit size and lot size for a, a small lot, single family home? And shared some examples here of what other cities are doing for allowing and encouraging small lot, single family homes. So this is what we're showing here is an example from Talent, and we explored some, some other cities such as Kous Bay, and I think in, in your packet, we also looked at Bend and kind of used those other examples from other cities in Oregon to help guide us in, in what sort of development standards we should consider here. So don't need to talk through all of these. We talked through them in pretty fine detail with the advisory committee. So we'll probably use this as a starting point, and when we come back to discuss the, the recommendations for the actual code updates, we'll get a little bit more into the weeds with you all. So moving on to one of the other high priority HPS recommendations was allowing and encouraging cottage clusters. So one of the questions that we talked about was should the city update cottage cluster standards in the code to ensure that those standards are consistent with state standards for cottage clusters? So the city isn't necessarily required to be compliant with state cottage cluster requirements because the city doesn't meet that population threshold. The population threshold is 25,000 people, which Lebanon is a little shy of. However, something to consider is Lebanon is growing and will eventually meet that threshold. So it's a matter of should the city just kind of expedite the process of compliance ahead of time, kind of being proactive about it? And we also discussed a little bit about lot dimensions and development standards for cottage clusters. And another thing to consider there is state model code standards, and those are largely based off of kind of best practices to help ensure that cottage clusters are, are a viable development option, but also kind of fit the character of existing, single family neighborhoods. So here's just a couple examples of what other cities are doing. One of, one of these graphics is from the city of Kaiser, and, and another one is from the state's model code standards for, for cottage clusters. Here's just a, a couple others. And lastly, our other high priority recommendation that came out of the HPS process was just ensuring that the city's manufactured home park standards are consistent with state standards. So Kelly, Kelly already discussed that, so that's not necessarily further encouraging them. It's just making sure that you're consistent with the, the state's requirements for how cities need to allow manufactured home parks. And with that, maybe I should pause there and see if there's any, any questions or want to talk through any of these in a little bit more detail before we talk about next, next steps.
There's no questions or comments? Are we moving forward then? I guess, continue.
Right. So I want to also, before I get to next steps, just kind of touch on something that Kelly said about this really being an iterative process. So we do have, you know, time to propose and review and get feedback and modify and propose again. So it's, it's kind of dry when you get down to the, the details of the language, but of course, it's very important. We also talked a little bit about, Kelly touched on the fact that, you know, for housing and quote unquote, needed housing, and the state has basically said, all housing is needed housing. So that's the, that's where we're at, that you need to have a clear and objective path to approval. So you, you always as a community need to have just cut and dry. Here are the requirements. If you meet the requirements, yes, you may build that, and yes, you may build that here because it's zoned properly. So we're looking for language to, to kind of clean up in that respect as well. That's not to say that you can't have a, a more subjective pathway that can be optional and chosen by, you know, a developer or a builder or a property owner who wants to do something a little outside the box, a little fancier, wants some different things to happen on a site. That should always be, you know, available as well. But for those folks that just meet the standards, it's going to be very simple to know that what is allowed or what is not allowed. So we have some of those updates as well, some updates on, based on just compliance with the state. Some of those changes are incorporating state language where you already need to comply with it. So you might as well have it in your code, one-stop shop. Again, it's, it's easier for your staff, it's easier for you making decisions, and ultimately, it's easier for an applicant as well. So there are a handful of those type of changes that we really didn't talk about tonight that we'll also be able to accomplish as part of this project. We're, we're thinking that those are probably not super worthy of a lot of discussion, probably like what you would call no brainers, I guess, but they'll still come before you and you will have an opportunity, of course, to, to determine whether or not that's true or whether you need to, to have more conversation, maybe more conversation with a wider variety of people than the advisory committee you currently have on this project. That's, you know, available and certainly legitimate path. And as Kelly said, there may be things where we thought were fairly straightforward that really do need more than a year's timeframe to, to consider and, and come up with a, with good code solutions. So all of that is, is available. We're, we're taking our best shot, but there's, you know, there's plenty of time for course correction, if you will. So these next up slides, just what's coming up for us is, is writing. We're, we're going to do a bunch of writing where we have bigger questions or, or we're not going to actually write out the code language until we have another conversation with the advisor committee. Those kind of things will be in process into the fall for the next advisory committee meeting, and, and there will be two related to just the code language. The next advisory committee, again, will have some, you know, some things pretty well advanced and, and dialed. This is really, you know, good language. We think this is, this is probably what, the way you want to go. And then we'll be identifying again those areas where we need more discussion. That will be the October meeting. And then we'll come back, we'll come back to you with a similar exercise, but through the lens and sort of clarification of the advisory committee's input. So that's what we have for you tonight.
All righty, thank you. Is there any, you know, I, I know there's a lot of information to take in, and sometimes people have questions after the fact. Is there any questions or comments? Kelly, do you have any additional comments?
Well, unless there's any absolute objections, we'll just keep moving forward and chug along and bring it back to you.
I think you'll probably have some, but we'll keep, keep progress going, so. I'd like to thank the consultants for your presentation. Thank you so much. Kelly, thank you for your presentation. I'd also like to thank everybody for taking time out of your day to come to this work session and hear the information that's put out. So if there's no questions or comments, this meeting is adjourned. Call the meeting in order. Let's please rise for the flag salute.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Will the city recorder please call roll?
Mayor Jacola.
Present.
Councilor Steinhebel.
Here.
Councilor Dykstra.
Here.
Councilor Mann.
Here.
Councilor Salvage.
Here.
Councilor Olfers.
Here.
Councilor Workman.
Here.
Thank you. Next item, a consent calendar. Following items are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items unless councillors so request. In this case, item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Agenda, Lebanon City Council Agenda, August 14th, 2024. Board minutes, Parks, Trails, or Parks, Trees and Trails Advisory Committee, April 17, 2024. Senior and Disabled Service Advisory Committee, April 17, 2024. Council meetings, 2024-07-10, City Council Executive Session, Regular Meeting, and then 2024-07-22, City Council Strategic Planning Work Session. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion been made to approve the consent counter. It's been second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We got a presentation tonight, Oregon Cascade Western Council of Governments. Ryan. Please make sure your, your mic's on and that you speak in the microphone. Yeah, red means, means you're available.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors and city staff. Thank you so much for having us tonight. For the record, my name is Ryan Vogt. I'm the executive director for the Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments, and tonight I brought a special guest. The last time I was here, I was lamenting that we were in the hunt for a community and economic development director that had been going for some time. I don't even play one well on TV. I'm a social worker through and through, so it's really troubling. But over here, I, I have Jacqueline Disney, our newest addition to the COG family, is our community and economic development director. I'm going to give her a moment to introduce herself here in just a second and talk a little bit about the exciting things going on in community and economic development, which is one of our largest intersection points with the city of Lebanon. You have in your packet, I believe, our annual report. Now, it's August, so that's a little stale at the moment, but I like to provide that to kind of, as a reminder for all of the things that we have going on. We have a county commissioner on our board who likes to refer to us as a friendly octopus because we seem to have tentacles and an awful lot of different things. And the annual report is a way to kind of re-stimulate the conversation about what an odd duck we are coming in and navigating so many different things. I don't intend to belabor the report, however, if there are questions about it or questions about any of our programs, I'd be happy to field those. There is one thing that is emerging though, that I wanted to talk about briefly before I hand it over to Jacqueline, and that is, many of you are familiar with our sister agency, the Community Services Consortium, and that is the region's anti-poverty agency. So they do a lot of work in housing, they do a lot of work in energy and weatherization, they have a Head Start program, they do a number of different things. And Peggy McGuire is the executive director over there. And over the last several years, both of our boards have asked us to partner closer and closer together because our population that we serve at the COG, a lot of the population we serve is seniors and people with disabilities, and many of whom are also low-income and the. And the Community Action Agency is really dedicated to serving low income people of all age groups for a variety of reasons. So we have a substantial crossover population. Our boards have asked us to partner and work closer and closer together. And as of last month, both boards have adopted the philosophy of moving forward and hiring a single executive director over both agencies. That's pretty hot off the press and they have not yet, to the best of my knowledge, figured out exactly how they're going to go about that or what that means. But the executive director Peggy of Community Services Consortium has announced her retirement in December, so the opportunity presented itself. We've already done some administrative efficiencies that are the we have a single tech services department that serves both agencies, a single human resources department that serves both agencies. We're now moving into a single communications department. So this isn't foreign territory for us, but this one's kind of a biggie. So I wanted to make sure that you all knew that because that means that the next time you invite me out, it may be somebody else coming out as the executive director for both agencies, wanting to take a little bit more of your time. So with that, I'll ask if there's any questions of me and then I'll hand it over to Jaclyn.
Only because I'm curious, I'm not sure I should ask, could you be that person?
The it is a possibility, yes.
Curious, sorry.
No, I I think they are still working out the logistics of how they wish to go about filling that role, but the vision that they've adopted is essentially an executive director over both agencies and then an agency director or an agency, whatever, yet to be named for each agency. So there there will continue to be layers. They will continue to be two separate legal entities, too. It's not a merger. I'm using every opportunity I can to say that. It's not a merger, so thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Does that mean that if you guys basically merge?
Yes, sir.
Well, that's what it is. Are you going to continue the initiative that Peggy started with forming your own rock?
The continuum of care is going to continue moving forward. Yes, sir.
Good.
Yeah, two two separate legal entities. So the efficiencies that we're looking at putting together is really in that admin oop, in that administrative lane. So we're looking at aligning policies across both agencies. We're looking at making sure, you know, we've invested in joint technology projects, so an enterprise finance software, a new HR system, a new payroll system. So we were able to negotiate a substantial discount by purchasing those for two agencies at the same time, implementing them simultaneously, designing them so that they both meet the exact same, you know, chart of accounts and things of that nature. And so I think what the pressure will be over the next couple of years will be to continue to align administrative services, like whether or not the two finance teams could ultimately be combined or what have you. But the model that's being contemplated at the moment continues to be two separate legal entities with just one director kind of guiding the vision, but they're they continue to exist as two agencies in statute, two agencies with separate missions. And so, yes, the continuum of care would continue on its path.
Good, because I know we've done a lot of work with that with crossroads.
Yes.
I know, that's my group.
Okay, great. Yeah, and hopefully Peggy can get a ribbon wrapped around the continuum of care before she exits.
I hope so.
If not, Kayla is continuing. If you haven't met her, the deputy director, she is planning on staying on board as well as into the long, long future.
That'll be a hoot.
Yeah. Okay, without further ado, I'll hand it over to you, Jaclyn.
Get a little closer to the microphone. Hi, good evening. I'm Jaclyn Disney. I'm the community and economic development director for the Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments. That is a lot of words all at once. I wouldn't say that we're an odd duck selection of services. Our community economic development team has a lot of great programs that help with what I like to think of as community readiness for growth. So a lot of times when you talk about economic development, people immediately think in terms of what are we doing for industrial growth or commercial growth or business growth? And that is a part of economic development where we see ourselves as a collaborative partner with a lot of our programs. But we also take a lot of pride in offering services around community readiness for growth. So how can we provide those transportation services, transportation planning services, land use planning services and grant writing services and grant and project administration services? So we are currently structuring our team to to continue to offer the best service we can. I know we have a lot of partner projects with you right now, ranging from the Brownfield as well as the Safe Streets for All Grant that came out, and we appreciate working with your team here. But I think I'm supposed to talk a little bit about myself. So who am I? I've been with the team since January. So I've almost made all seasons through the area and I did start in the coldest ice storm rainy season, so I am prepared for a full round of inclement weather coming up shortly here after the fall. I've had, prior to joining the Cascades West team, I spent about 20, just over 20 years in local government in the Northern California area. I was with the city of Reading as well as with Shasta County, serving in roles in electric utilities, water utilities, groundwater management, as well as housing redevelopment. And we were a seven county homeless continuum of care administrating agency, so pretty wide range of services. Spent a lot of time with affordable housing. And shortly after departing from Shasta County, I worked with a venture capital company that did 3D concrete printing for disaster recovery housing, also braiding that with workforce development and housing development, affordable housing development. And it gave us an opportunity to part with our cities and braid together private sector and public sector opportunities to create housing that was disaster and climate resilient. So bringing some of that private sector piece into a long career in public service and then joining the Cascades team, I feel as though in the Northern California area, and I just want to remind everyone, there's a whole lot of Northern California above Sacramento, okay? It's very different up there. There's a lot of trees. We have a lot of similar pain points when it comes to disaster relief, wildfire disasters, as well as just our some of our communities homelessness and a range of rural and small community housing issues. So there's a lot of crossover. I'm happy to be here and I really enjoy the the welcome that I've that I've received and getting to know all the communities that are in our region. So here to answer any questions as well. I know a lot of our programs you're probably familiar with, and it's also in your packet tonight as far as the annual report statistics. For those of you who may not know, we offer, you know, our ride line program offers non-emergency medical transportation throughout the region. In May and June, we scheduled about 26,000 rides between valley and coastal communities and served about 5,100 unique clients. And that's providing rides to people who are Medicare eligible, getting them to their medical appointments as well as to mental health and drug treatment appointments as well. So in addition to all the planning services, we also have the brokerage services. So we have a lot of a lot of range of programs that we use to to help our communities.
All righty, thank you. Is there any questions? Comments? All righty. Appreciate your time. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Move on to, oh, Julie, can you do me a favor? So not everybody that goes up and speaks tonight is Kelly Hart.
Do you want me to turn this off? I can.
Thank you. Move on to public comments. Citizens may address the council by filling out a testimony comment card prior to speaking and handing to city recorder. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comment to council. The council may take additional two minutes to ask clarifying questions. City recorder will accept and distribute written comments at speaker's request. You have five minutes. When it when it's green, you're doing well. When it goes yellow, you got one minute left. And then when it's red, you need to need to close your comments up. So first, let me do this one first. There was a written public comments, a petition to the city council that was, it's in your packet, and it is pertaining to, I read it over, just quality of life policies within the city. So they they want to make sure that we're addressing, you know, vandalism, littering, loitering, vagrancy. I don't think we can do that one anymore. That's not even on the books. So public intoxication, those type of things. They want to make sure that we keep a good quality of life for our citizens. Please make sure you take the time to read that if you have it. Moving on, next will be first up tonight is Linda Newport Brewer, Ward Three. And please make sure that the the little red light's on and you speak clearly into the microphone so we can make sure we hear you.
I just go ahead and speak.
Yes, it's your time. You have five minutes.
I live on East Elmore Street, directly across from the old Queen Anne's School. And for about the last, I would say, eight solid years, the parking has been an issue, a tremendous issue. And I sent pictures, the way that road is set up is there is the church, Kneegatire, Queen Anne's pulling for the apartments, and then there's an eightplex directly across the street. In the middle of the block is our three homes. And there's like probably what, 50 feet between our homes, unfortunately? And I have dual driveways. My driveway is right next to Kyle's driveway and then Kyle's home. And then Kyle's second driveway, he shares with Darren's house. So all three of our houses are so close together. The problem is, is when people are parking across the streets from our homes, I hit a semi truck that was left parked across the street from my home about seven years ago. Knew the semi was there. Go out to get out of my driveway at nighttime and I hit the semi's tire. Called the police, I get ticketed. Took the police officers like three days to even figure out who the semi belonged to. The last windstorm in, what was it, 2020? Three out of four of our homes needed new roofs because we all have, I have like 11 trees on my property. Kyle probably has 30 of them. And all three of our houses are like that. We all use the same roofers. And then when it was my time to get my roof done, we had to reschedule it for a week because I had a RV hooked up with a rope with a broken down truck all behind it and they couldn't even get the semis in there to replace the roof on my home and get the trees off my home. The poor, are you the chief of police? He's probably gotten 100 emails from us. And it's just unreal how they bring these vehicles on our streets, off our streets. They're creeping them in at nighttime. They're towing them in. And if it was our neighbors, we have a very good rapport with Queen Anne Apartments. Larry and Debbie live at the very end of my block on Grove Street. They've lived there 55 years. She always has ice cream socials, barbecues. So if it was actually a neighbor of mine at Queen Anne Apartments, we would be able to go talk to them and they wouldn't block our driveways. I mean, it it just would not happen. And we've even emailed Guardian. They own Queen Anne Apartments up in Portland. There is 99 units. They have two overflow parking lots for their residents. And then they have visitor parking and they even have new tenant parking. So they discourage their tenants from parking on East Elmore Street. And the ones that are leaving their vehicles there are probably the ones that are not authorized to be on Queen Anne's Apartments living there because they have strict policies. They have all their vehicles registered to their tenants. And if it's an unauthorized vehicle, they call the police and the police tow those vehicles. So it's just been this nightmare for our neighborhood for the last six, eight years.
All right, is there any questions? Comments? We are going to be, we are going to be talking about this subject tonight. And so if you stick around, you'll hear that conversation and then how we're going to vote on it.
Jeremy be able to verify? My neighbor Kyle has to back his, he has a big truck. He has to back his own truck into his driveway because if he pulled in, he wouldn't be able to get his vehicle out. That road is so congested, you know? And I knew I heard city council say, well, it's only three feet short. Well, three feet, I've hit cars that are parked across the street from my home. My kid hit my car one time. You know, I should be able to have where I can get access in and out of my driveway. My neighbor Kyle should be able to do the same thing. And I have a statement. Do you want, do you mind if I read? Kyle has.
You you have 38 seconds.
Oh, never mind. Kyle has four little girls at home and his wife's still at work, but.
Is your state, is your statement printed?
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Okay.
It's just going to say that he would wish you guys would put it back to no parking like it was when Queen Anne's School was there, is all he's going to say.
Well, like I said, if you stick around, we're going to be, we're going to be talking about that.
Okay, and you're going to be able to talk to Jeremy because he's been to our homes.
Yeah, I've been there and I'll be able to, I've I've mentioned it a few times in the several discussions we've had, but I, if there's more questions, I can.
And I think that the lieutenant's probably gotten 50 emails from us from pictures of these vehicles that just congest. If the homes, oh, I'm done.
Yep.
Sorry.
Like I said, stick around. We're going to be talking about that subject. Okay, next up is Melinda Rickard. Ward One. You have five minutes. Make sure the red light on your, the the mic is on so we can hear you.
Okay, my name's Melinda Rickard. I live in Lebanon, newly here from about a year ago from California. I went to Eugene Springfield Albany, but I decided on Lebanon because I I like the town feeling and I walked the main streets and looked at the storefront, some empty and some busy and thriving. I even thought that this would be a perfect place to start a business, given the fact I read the door, the door sign that the black bag medical bag school had on their door explaining how it came about. And there would be a lot of patriots here that would agree and some disagree about how it saved the town. So given that thought, I was like, this was a good place to be. With the P bonds and the roads, I've had to use a lot of the resources here recently. And it's unfortunate, a lot of them aren't in the same area. Some of them Albany, some of them are here, but they're not really consistent as far as one base place where they can be all located in one place. So that's also one of the things I like to bring up. But also with the electrical bills and stuff like that for people that are having problems, there is electric bill that unfortunately for me, when I first got here, there was a probation of someone that lived in my residence before me. I did not know of this and this reflected the rate for the next year, which reflected my bill. I had brought that to their attention. It was never refunded, nothing like that. I think I talked to Ken, where's Ken at? I'm sorry, is there a Ken here? I think I spoke with you on the phone regarding this. For people like me, I'm struggling to try to get things above where they were. And with the water being shut off because I didn't make that payment, there was a $50 lockout fee that had to be assessed and put back onto the bill, which I'm already struggling. So let's add another $50 bill. It doesn't make a lot of sense for someone who actually had a rate increase due to somebody else that lived there and without knowing this or challenging them on it, there was no refund, there was no rebate, there was no, okay, well, maybe we'll just go ahead and let this one go for the $50 fee is assessed on the next bill. So that causes another problem. So next bill is probably going to be shut off again. With that, there's also other problems. Being that I want to start business here, I want to be able to profit this business, this company in this this town just as much as, you know, anybody else would love to be here. I faced some challenges. I've had a car accident that resulted in using a tow company, AA Towing. They, I believe in my eyes, need to be regulated. The fees that were assessed to that tow cost like $600 for overnight stay for that vehicle. The vehicle could not get out and became a property of AA Towing. The itemized list on those things were ridiculous. They were not even meant to be charged. They shouldn't have been. The fee would have probably been half of that and maybe maybe able to get out vehicle, get the vehicle out. It could have been my work source. It could have been my living. We don't know. But the the homeless problem that we have, we're actually, we're causing it by doing this. And fortunately, I had a second vehicle, so that one was right off. That's fine. But flat fee fee, there was a possessionary fee that was went along with it. That's for, they have to file that within three days by law supposedly. Well, I eat that charge. That's part of the tow. And five days of assessment of its storage, I'm eating that cost, too. Why? It was only one night overstay. It could have been maybe $300. Now it's $600. It just needs to be more regulated, I believe. Because these problems, I, again, I had to face these things and the resources that are available to me are very slim, being that I don't have dependents. I'm here, I'm not yet a senior, but I'm I'm getting close to there. They've been challenging. So as as much as I'd like to be in this town, I want to see some changes be made and and addressed. But I don't see where any of any direction is going that way. And that's why I'm here today to speak up and see what you guys have to say. But I don't see where any, any direction's going that way, and that's why I'm here today, to speak up and see what you guys have to say.
Alrighty. On the 50, we'll, we'll discuss the, really quick, I'll, I'll just give you the information on the water bill. Brandon, the finance director, and I talked about that. Did we, we waive that one fee, correct?
Yes.
For the re, the hookup?
Yes, we did.
So it shouldn't be on your, your next bill? If it is, communicate with the water department, and we'll make sure that it's not on there. So on the tow truck stuff, I don't know, there's not really much the city can do on that. That's more of a... I'll, I'll let Trey address that, maybe, for a minute.
Well, that's, that's more state law than anything. I assume this was what we would consider a non-preference towing, or was it a hazard towing, or?
No, no, it was in the ditch. It was no, no property damage, nothing assessed, just needed to be pulled out of the ditch, and, you know...
Oh, it was from an accident or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So they, they were called in by the sheriff's department.
There's no local regulation on what they can charge. That's state, state-regulated.
The state-regulated?
I would agree that I disagree with some of the ability to make certain charges.
Right?
But there's nothing that we can do about it as a locality.
So it is a state-regul, okay. Thank you. I wasn't sure how to address that one.
Do you happen to know what ward you're in? Ward one?
One.
I'm sorry, I missed.
I'm sorry, I missed that one.
I was just checking what ward you're in. We represent a different area.
Oh, yes, yeah. I think Carl and Wayne are in my zones, or something like that.
Ward one.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question for staff. So we have a process to waive those fees, like internally, if someone comes and makes an appeal? Not necessarily to city council, but to staff?
We do, yes. There's, there is a kind of an appeal process of sorts. And usually, it's, customer interacts with the finance staff. And finance staff can kind of look over the account, determine what kind of the past history looks like. And we do make exceptions for, for various things that ultimately have to come up to the director level, just because we don't have a, a kind of a middle manager, so.
Okay.
But we do make exceptions from time to time.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure there was some sort of process in place. Thank you.
And I've talked to him about that, too. And it's, I, I refer it to, like, when I have an overdraft fee. If I haven't had one for a long time, they'd better waive it. But if I've had a lot, then they probably don't waive it.
Sure.
It's just good business.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up is Lebanon Downtown Association, Shelley Jacklaw.
Hello. Just to give an update on what has been going on the last month in downtown. Last night, we had the concerts in the park, and it was by far the best concert, or the most attended concert that we had. We had close to 500 people at it. We had 10 different vendors, and I talked to people from seven different towns. So they were from Springfield, Eugene, Salem, Corvallis, Albany, Sweet Home. So it was, it was a very good turnout. It was nice to see all the people. Saturday is our car show. We now, we have about 1,500 people on Facebook that are interested in going. So let's all cross our fingers there's no rain, because now it says there's 45% chance of rain. And we, we have, I think, 12 different vendors that are signed up to be down there. And we've got live music going on, the Gambler 500, they're gonna be down there. So it should be pretty good fun. We have the bike art down Main Street. So if you haven't been down Main Street, we have, well, should be 17 bikes. There's still a couple that are being worked on right now, that should be out soon. I'll put a video together and put it on Facebook, so everybody can see all the different bikes. But there's some pretty neat ones down there. And we're just doing that this year, in lieu of the turkeys, just to switch things up, to keep people coming down there, looking at them. We have five new art boards, so they were all put up this month in Strawberry Plaza. The Downtown worked with the Tools of the Trade for the medical bags. We wrote welcome cards to the students. A lot of different businesses put coupons in the bags for, you know, a free movie, or a donut, or whatever the business wanted to give, but we filled it up. And then we participated and helped out with the Welcome Week. So we had 150 students in Downtown Lebanon, going to all the different shops. And they, the businesses gave out samples of different things, and welcomed all the students in. It was pretty lively down there. We're currently working with Build Lebanon Trails to do a downtown tour September 5th. And I'm not quite, I don't remember who they said it is. Somebody from out of town, they said they're coming in on a bus. So I'm not sure who it is, but she said, can you talk to the owners? And I roped somebody in to leading the, the tour. And we are working with a couple different businesses right now, building owners. That is, with the Downtown Restoration Grant through the Oregon Parks and Rec, that will be opening up here soon. And so we're gonna try to get another good-sized grant for a couple of the buildings in downtown. And I talked to Gary Marks, and he is going to restore the totem pole. He wants me to get it wrapped in plastic, so he can start on it after the winter, because he doesn't have time. But we're in the works of getting that fixed.
That was gonna be my question.
Okay, yes, I, I talked to him, and he got a new art board up. And he's working on another one, too, so.
That's all he does.
Yeah, I know, I know. So, but he said he would be happy to do the totem pole and get it looking good again, so.
Last time, so.
Yeah. And I just started talking to a lady that works at the school for the Native American Heritage. And we have just now started discussing about maybe doing a pow-wow or something here in Lebanon. So it's kind of a project that will be fun to take on, and see if we can make that happen.
Thank you. Any other questions?
How classics do the cars have to be in the car show, and where are the cars gonna be?
No, you can't take them.
You know what? I have no age requirements. If you want to bring a car down, bring it down. And we're gonna take Main Street down to One Lane, and then we're closing Ash and Sherman. And so we'll fill up Main Street first, and then go to the side roads. But anybody can enter a car. That's what, even the Gambler...
I'm gonna bring my grandson down to my car, so just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
What day is that?
Saturday.
This Saturday. And I'll pray against the rain for you.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions? Alrighty, thank you. All right, we'll move on to regular session. First item up tonight is acceptance of the fiscal year 2023 annual finance report. Finance Director, Brandon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to present the 2023 fiscal year annual financial report for the city. First, I'd like to take a moment to thank the team at Singer-Lewak for their tremendous efforts during this process. Specifically, I'd like to thank Brad Binging, Bing, Bingingheimer, sorry, a partner at Singer-Lewak, who is with us today remotely, Kathy Wilson, and Nicole Ryan, the, the manager assigned to our audit. This has been a long road, but we are glad to have made it through this audit, and we're already getting started on the next one. No time like the present, as they say. Before you is the full report, as well as the auditor's opinion, delivered through the independent auditor's report, beginning on page five of the financial report, and the FY 2023 audit communication to the governing board included in the council packet. I will leave the audit opinion to Brad to deliver, but spoiler alert, I don't have to present any policy or procedural changes for your review and comment this year. Some important figures I'd like to highlight for you. First, net position increased 19% from 2022 in governmental activities, which is everything in the organization except for water, sewer, and storm drainage programs. In simple terms, the net position demonstrates the amount of assets and deferred outflow of resources against liabilities and deferred inflows of resources. We want a positive net position. Net position also increased in the utility programs noted throughout the document as business-type activities. We will want to monitor the deficit in unrestricted net position that you see in the governmental activities over time. But, for the record, that did decrease in 2023. Second, fines, fees, and charges for services declined for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2023, offset in part by increases in property taxes and franchise fees. As property taxes continue to climb the maximum 3% annually, the city will become more reliant on charges for service. Look for that to maintain or increase in future years. Long-term debt in business-type activities increased due to the West Side Interceptor Project. Total outstanding, total debt outstanding is equal to 130% of total revenues generated across the city. For comparison, the recent federal debt as a percent of GDP was 122%. Next, general fund expenditures and transfers out exceeded revenue by $108,000. We've been discussing this as an impending item, and it is finally here. In 2022, revenue exceeded expenditures and transfers by $78,000. So we have officially crested that hill, and we're starting on the downward side, similar to the conversations that we've had previously in council meetings. The city did add $3 million in cash during 2023. Next, a new governmental accounting standards board, or GASB rule, was implemented, with GASB 96, subscription-based information technology agreements, also known as SPITAs, which records a right-to-use asset and a related liability, the agreement terms, and associated implementation costs. Net pension liability increased for the year ended June 30, 2023. Yields for the PERS program were not as robust as desired in 2022, increasing the unfunded actuarial liability. 2023 did not look any better, unfortunately, meaning this will get worse over time. Lastly, the general fund has three lines that were over-expended in 2023. These were the library, which exceeded its authorized budget by $996, primarily due to year-end adjustments in personnel expenditures. Capital outlay for non-departmental was overdrawn, which overran by $790 due to cost overruns with a new fire system installation at the Justice Center. And the principal debt service line was overspent due to the implementation of GASB 96 and subsequent adjustments made at year end. So did not have, once, once we cross the fiscal year, we can't make adjustments at that point to our budget, so. The annual financial report contains figures for all of the other funds across the city's financial structure, and offers additional information for readers. I'm happy to answer any questions the city council may have. But before I do, I'm gonna ask Brad if he has any additional information he would like to add, and ask him to speak to their findings and review.
Well, thank you, Brandon. Thank you for having me here tonight. With me also is a, the manager that's assigned to the 2024 audit for the city, Fierce Katok. Fierce joined us this last year after having experience with another firm here in Oregon. And before that, actually had experience with a, one of the big four firms on the island of Guam, where he was auditing governmental entities there in Guam. So, yeah, so we've have audited the financial statements, and we've issued our opinion. And the opinion is what we consider to be an unmodified opinion, which in a nutshell basically says, you know, that in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position and results of operations for the year ended June 30, 2023. Now, you know, in developing that opinion, there's a lot that goes into it. So I thought I'd give you kind of a quick overview of kind of what an audit process is. Because really, the audit comes in three phases. The first is kind of our planning and risk assessment phase, where, you know, we, we obtain some preliminary information from the city, and we look through that, you know, identify any accounts that we think we might want to look at in a little bit closer. We read the minutes of city council, get a lot of information out of the minutes, because that provides us information on some of the maybe non-financial information that could have a financial statement impact. Also, in this process, we ask a million and one annoying questions. We want to know about this, that, and the other thing. You know, part of that is we're gaining the understanding of internal controls. And, you know, we kind of bring all this together and say, okay, you know, given everything we know, where do we think the riskier areas are, and the less risky areas are? And that helps us formulate our audit plan. So in the next phase, we're actually execute that plan, where we come in and we are obtaining evidence that supports the amounts reported on the financial statements. So, you know, we'll verify some information to source documents. We might obtain outside information from, like, the state of Oregon. They provide you a lot of money. The, the county, because they collect your property taxes and distribute those to you. So we'll, we'll get outside information, and we'll just perform analysis on accounts. You know, do the numbers make sense for everything we know about the city? Of course, in this process, we may come up with some things that we think might need to be changed. So we'll propose adjustments. And those are always discussed with, you know, Brandon, so that, you know, we both agree, yes, there was an error. Yes, it needs to be corrected, and this is the best way to do it. So we will propose adjustments, perhaps. And also during this timeframe, we'll be doing some tests of compliance. Because besides just the financial statement, there are some compliance requirements that the city has that we are required to test on. I'll touch on that in just a minute. But, so, you know, we gathered all this evidence, and the, you know, our team says, yeah, we're, we're done. And at that point in time, we start the completion phase, which is where all that documentation is gonna be reviewed. And it's gonna be reviewed by the manager on the engagement. It'll be reviewed by a partner, usually me, if not me, another partner. And then, after that, there's finally another partner that looks at it as a concurring partner review, so that we make sure we have everything right. So we'll make sure we've complied with standards, and, you know, we, we've done our job in auditing the financial statements. And of course, you know, we're looking at the financial statements, making sure that they all tie to the trial balances, that, that big document, all the numbers tie back and forth. So we look at that very closely. And then at the end of that, you know, we finally will ask the city for representations on the engagement, basically saying that they've given us everything and provided us all the information. At that point in time, then, we can issue our opinions. So we issue the opinion on the financial statements. And then the second report, which is at the very back of your document, is our report under the Oregon minimum standards. And that requires us to look at specific Oregon laws and regulations to determine whether you've complied with those or not, and touches very briefly on internal controls. Now, with internal controls, you know, as I said at the planning session, part of the, of the audit, we're gaining the understanding of internal controls. If in that process, we identify something that we believe is either a significant deficiency that warrants your attention, or a material weakness, where we really think there's possibly for something to go wrong, we would bring those forth to you in a separate doc, in a separate letter to council. Have a report, we don't have that letter this year. So we didn't identify anything that we believed needed your attention in terms of the city's internal controls. And then also, we had, issue a separate letter to you. This is kind of a general summary of the audit. Gives you kind of an overview of what we did, some things that you might want to consider as you read the document. Brandon highlighted a bunch of those things, you know. I always talk about, you know, your net pension liability, and how those things are not looking any better, you know, for anybody. So anyways, with that, if you have any questions about the audit, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
I know it's a very exciting subject. Is there any questions?
I, I have one.
Yes.
And it's nothing about the audit itself, other than why are we just now finishing 2023s? And I'm already getting emails from these folks about 2024s. What was the delay?
I would say a multitude of things. We worked with the auditors last calendar year, 2023, to try to wrap everything up. We got to December, handed over everything that, at that point, that we had, had, that had been requested of us. Some certain, some illness on their side, and, and things pushed things out. And then we moved right into budget season. And on, on my side, certainly, we didn't kind of poke and, and ask, you know, where we were at for a substantial amount of time. And each month, I've stuck in your, in the city manager's report, in the finance section, kind of the, the date stamps as to when we've accomplished things.
They just kept moving out, I noticed.
Yeah. And so by the time we finally got back to it, it was March. And then we worked as fast as we could possibly get. And then we worked as fast as we could possibly get through any final review that the audit team had to make, drafting the financials.
Are we looking for this year to get done a little sooner?
We're hoping so. We are making one change this year in that we are not going to draft. We've asked Singer-Lee-Wak to do the drafting for us this year, which should help. You know, some of it certainly comes down to bottleneck in my office, right? So we are hoping that that will certainly assist in the coming year. And then at that point, it'll be on me to make sure that... and the finance office to make sure that they have everything they need in time to draft those financial statements in a timely fashion.
Would you please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? From the council? No other questions from council staff? Okay, so we can move to, is there a motion of acceptance?
I move to accept.
Second.
Motion's been made to accept. It's been seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion to accept passes. At this time, we'll adjourn the Lebanon City Council and reconvene as the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency. Acceptance of fiscal year 2023 annual finance report for the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency Finance Director.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board... I have to change your titles in this one. Thank you for the opportunity to present the 2023 fiscal year annual financial report for the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency. Again, a thank you to the team at Singer-Lee-Wak for their efforts during this process. Before you is the full report, as well as the auditor's opinion delivered through the independent auditor's report, beginning on page 1A of the financial report. The 2023 audit communication to the governing body is included with the city presentation. As with the city report, I will leave the audit opinion to Brad to deliver after I give you some important facts that I pulled from here, from that report. First, net position increased 28% from 2022. The net position is still a deficit, however, due to the high long-term debt carried by the URA compared to the total assets. Remember, for assets, the district's only assets are primarily cash and cash equivalents. Overall revenue increased, driven by property tax increases allowed under Measure 50. The agency is currently carrying nearly $10.5 million in debt. The majority of that is in the Northwest Urban Renewal District, which has no new projects in the works and is only working on debt repayment at this point. Two areas within the Urban Renewal Agency over-expended this year: $260 was spent on compliance fees in the Northwest URD. This was a payment to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, an annual payment. However, budget authorization in this fund resided in debt service lines only. The other was in the Mill Race District, where property values and taxes exceeded the estimates by the agency. As a result, the URA had to pay out additional costs for the economic development agreement in place. The annual financial report contains figures for all of the other funds across the agency's financial structure and offers additional information for readers. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have, but before I do, I'm going to ask Brad if he has any additional information he would like to add and ask him to speak to their findings and review.
Yes, so, you know, once again, we've issued our opinion on these financial statements, which are also considered an unmodified opinion. And then, you know, in the Oregon Minimum Standards Report, we do highlight any budgetary violations, so those are listed there. And of course, the Urban Renewal Agency is what's considered a blended component unit of the city. So these amounts are also presented in the city's financial statements as a separate fund, but we do issue this separate report on that, on the agency's financial statements.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion of acceptance for the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency's report?
Accept.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made to accept. It's been seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. At this time, we'll adjourn the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency and reconvene as the Lebanon City Council. And we'll move on to resolution number 22 for 2024, resolution eliminating parking on a portion of Elmore Street within the city of Lebanon in term city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. A couple of months ago, actually about three months ago, the council had asked city staff to look at the possibility of eliminating parking on Elmore Street just to the east of Kanega Tire Store and up to Grove Street along the Queen Anne apartment site there of Elmore Street. We did a traffic analysis, basically a tube count of that area, just to kind of get an idea of what kind of traffic volumes we had. That represented not a lot of traffic compared to the street size. With that, council did ask us to bring back a resolution for no parking. We sent out a letter, excuse me, to the neighborhood, basically saying, hey, that we're going to propose eliminating parking on that. The only testimony that I've heard for that, or any letters, phone calls, or anything are from tonight, that you heard tonight. So with that, I'm happy to ask, answer any questions, but we have before you a resolution to restrict that parking.
Julie, did you have that one photo that I sent? That was just when I made a visit to the street. That was from Linda's front porch. You can see when the vehicles park on the other side of the street, it's a really tight to back out of your driveway, it gets really tight. And it's actually pretty tight to drive through that area with parking on both sides.
Same thing on all side streets. That one's more congested because of the car.
Yep, yep.
Thank you. Is this both sides of the street?
No, this would just be the south side.
Queen Anne side.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
When you read...
That's Jeremy's.
Do you have to read it?
Normally, I do.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
You want to read the resolution?
Just going to be a wallflower all night long, but I wanted to do something.
You got to give it something.
I thought it was only on ordinances, but my apologies. My apologies.
I don't even know where that... anyways. Resolution eliminating parking on a portion of Elmore Street within the city of Lebanon, resolution number 2024-22.
Okay, now stepping back.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made to approve this resolution. It's been seconded all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Resolution passes.
Okay, well, it'll take us a bit to get signs and get it painted, but we'll work on doing that here in the near future.
Thank you, Ron.
And I hope that makes the neighborhood easier to navigate around. So we'll move on to ordinance bill 2024-07, ordinance number 3023, a bill for a ordinance amending Lebanon's municipal code Title 13 Public Services Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you is... are some amendments that we'd like to make to Title 13 of the Lebanon Municipal Code. Specifically, the code section 13.04.085 talks about an in lieu of franchise fee, which currently is allocated up to 5%. As you'll remember, through the budget committee process and as part of the adopted budget, we proposed moving that fee up to 7% from the utility funds. So this is a little bit of cleanup and getting that ready so that we can collect that 7% fee from the utility funds, as with... which is similar to most of our other franchise agreements that we have in place. Secondly, what's did we do here? Oh, there is a section currently that reads the Lebanon City Council... Nope, that's not what it currently reads. Here we go. "The city shall establish a utility rate review committee consisting of two members of the city council and members of the public who are rate payers of the system or other interested parties," and goes on to talk about what that committee will do. "We are proposing to amend that section to read the Lebanon City Council shall review utility rates and provide a public forum for such review. The city council shall meet annually to review the financial and physical condition of the water and wastewater systems, and if necessary, update rates accordingly." Lastly, Lebanon Municipal Code Section 13.25.140 talks about storm drainage. And again, this is a section that we're proposing to add, because there is no current language regarding an in lieu of franchise fee section for the storm drainage. So again, a little bit of cleanup, getting ready for this current fiscal year that started in July, and we are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
No questions? All righty. I will not... I won't steal your thunder. Can you please read the title of the ordinance?
Bill for an ordinance amending Lebanon Municipal Title 13 Public Services, ordinance bill number 2024-07, ordinance number 3023.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve. It's been seconded all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. We'll move on to League of Oregon Cities Legislative Priorities Discussion Staff.
So this has been originally presented to you...
Turn your mic on, please. Turn your mic on.
There we go. Hi, let's try that again.
Here you go first.
The League of Oregon Cities is the representation of the cities in Oregon for the legislature to discuss priorities and assist in policymaking for cities. And they have discussed 23 different policy priorities at their level, and they've requested cities that are part of their organization to identify their top five priorities. We originally presented this to the city council back last month. As part of the original proposal, what we ended up doing was asking council to individually fill out a survey to identify what you individually thought were the top five priorities. And so what we got back was a little bit of a mixed bag, but also kind of a uniform of same thought. And what you have on the screen is the results of that. Universally, the number one priority identified was infrastructure funding. And then there was pretty much a five-way tie based off of the analysis of the data between full funding and alignment for housing production, restoration of recreational immunity, continued addiction policy reform, lodging tax flexibility, and then the 2025 transportation package funding. Staff got together, and we also reviewed... I don't know what the heck I just did. Arrow back. Thanks. We also went through and looked at the 23 policies and council's recommendations, and staff is largely aligned with council on the policies. So we are making a very similar recommendation with one minor proposal to switch out the continued addiction policy reform for behavioral health enhancements. The proposal for this is, when reading through the two proposals, they're similar, but for behavioral health enhancements, this would allow for direct implementation of an individual going into treatment versus the addiction policy reform would be just continued citation and increasing the types and amounts of misdemeanors that can be cited. So we thought that the advocacy for actual direction into treatment would be a larger tooth or teeth that the city could support with the tools that we have available to us. And so that would be staff's recommendation based off of our review of the policies that are available in the LSC's proposals. This is what was identified in the proposals and in council's review. We do have Shontae, our legislative guru, online with us to answer questions and help guide us through the process. And so the item before us tonight is to finalize what the top five priorities are in list of order, and then direct the city manager to submit those to LOC. And I see that we might have questions.
Yeah, can you go over that number four, the behavioral health enhancements, for me again? You kind of went quick on that, and it almost sounded like the old California 5150.
So the language that LOC has in it is LOC will introduce and support legislation to expand access to behavioral health treatment beds and allow courts greater ability to direct persons unable to care for themselves into treatment through civil commitment process.
So we're basically asking the state to fund better mental health facilities that we can actually put people in?
Precisely.
Sure.
Versus the addiction policy reform, which is LOC will introduce and support legislation to allow drug-related misdemeanors to be cited into municipal courts and provide stable funding for services in HB 4002 in 2024, and allow more service providers to transport impaired persons into treatment. Similar, but different, so it's really two ways either. It was a minor modification proposal. It's really at council's discretion. We're just really looking for final proposals from council to button it up and get it submitted.
Why do I think... or it seems like I just read that the restoration of recreational immunity, that that's already happened?
There was a temporary fix where we had to opt into it, but it was temporary, and we need to have a formal finalized fix, and Trey can answer more detailed.
Actually, I was kind of putting that up too, because I forgot that it was... actually had a sunset clause. I have no doubt that the legislative... does currently sunset.
Okay.
So, like, that means that really isn't a... that's likely to happen without us having it be a priority. Am I hearing that wrong?
But I do think it's important enough that we make sure that they do it.
Just on an expansion piece, I mean, that's a huge liability for the city if that... if for some reason that did not come up. You know, that could be somebody tripping on a trail, and then suddenly we are, you know, financially liable for whatever.
We have a lot of trails.
I just thought if it was going to go anyway, we wouldn't want to push that, but I understand.
Right, yeah.
Until they make it permanent, we should make it a priority.
Yeah.
I understand. How much hold does the League of Oregon Cities actually have at the legislature?
The League of Oregon Cities is a good tool for cities. They are an effective organization.
Did you say that Sean's online?
Yes, Sean is online and available for questions.
Yeah. Sean, can you give us your insight on the League of Oregon Cities? I'm not going to let you just sit on there and not talk. Sean?
Amute, huh?
He was.
Did he fall off?
While we're waiting for him to come, I can give you my two cents.
Okay.
The league, I think, is wonderful in a lot of ways. They walk a fine line between big cities, Portland, Eugene, and then also the small cities. There are a lot of smaller cities, smaller than Lebanon, but that are kind of organizing to try to maybe focus on stuff that's more important to smaller communities and smaller municipalities. But I think the League of Oregon Cities does a really good job of trying to identify and focus on those issues that both big cities and smaller cities can agree on, right? I think they walk a fine line in a lot of times between those issues that may be diversified between the smaller and bigger cities. But they're a great resource. They really are.
Did you...
I was calling on my phone.
He's still on there but not available?
Technology's great.
oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, if anybody wants to take a look at their website, the amount of... the amount of information and resources that they have on their website, and maybe you all have. I mean, I assume a lot of you have taken a look at the League of Oregon Cities website. But the amount of information that's on, I mean, that's one of the first places I go when I'm researching something or, yeah. I steal stuff from them all the time and makes my, you know, makes me look smart at certain points.
So.
Okay.
So were you able to communicate with Sean?
I have him on the phone, so I can just hold him up to the microphone.
Can you hear us, Sean?
I can barely hear you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize for my technical difficulties. The question, correct me if I'm wrong, the question was to talk a little bit about the League of Oregon Cities and, and this process. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, yeah. So the League of Oregon Cities, I heard, I heard the question asked about the level of influence of the league in the legislative process. They're, they're very, very involved in the legislative process. They do ultimately represent through their membership most, if not all, cities in Oregon. And they do have some responsibility for communicating with the legislative body when it comes to, as an example, the effect of a piece of, of proposed legislation on a city. So they have a pretty major role. They're a, a strong asset for us to partner with as we work some of our own potential priorities. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you. Is there any questions of Sean, since we have him on the phone?
Does he have any opinion of the, can he see this list and does he have any input into our priorities? Or do we want to?
He has seen the list and based off of the messages back and forth, he has identified support of either the, the staff recommendation or the modification.
Reporting in progress.
I'm not going to put that there because it's got reverb. He has identified support for the, we're going to have fun with technology today. For the, the staff recommendation or, or you can switch it out for the, the continued addiction reform policy. Either would work. He has identified a review for both and support for either.
Alrighty. You, you can probably tell him thank you.
He says thank you. I'm going to hang up now.
You're welcome. I managed to get back on the presentation. Any other questions?
That's why it's reverb. Thank you. Fantastic. My goodness.
Well, maybe since we have him, could we ask his opinion on the, the two? Because kind of the two conflicting items are would be the continued addiction policy reform and the behavioral health enhancements. Sean, do you have anything to speak on that?
Yeah, Sean, I want your read on that, too.
Give me the question again. My apologies.
Okay, so the council priorities, one of them was continued addiction reform and the staff recommendation substituted behavioral health enhancements for that line item. What's, what's your thought on one versus the other?
That it's a little bit too early, quite frankly, to, to dial down into the weeds on language. And the reason I say that is I haven't seen language yet relative to any of the legislative efforts. Does that make sense?
Right. Okay. So the, the language you had, what was that referring to?
That was out of the, the League of Oregon Cities.
Out of their priority list.
I get, I get the difference between that and I understand that. My preference would have both of those on there, to be honest. But I understand that the, the, being able to write more tickets doesn't do as much as putting beds for people to stay in. Or I know that's oversimplifying, but I think that's kind of the difference between the.
Yeah. I guess for me, when I look at it, it's building, the one that council identified is building off of HB 4002. And the other one is starting kind of from scratch. So I still lean towards the ones that, the one that council identified.
Can I ask Sean, Sean, on the behavioral health part of it, is that more of a county issue? Or is there, because of the housing portions of it, is that something that is a, a city, kind of a city priority?
Well, it, it, it has been historically more of a county priority than a city priority, to answer your question. Yeah.
If I may, I think one of the things that we were discussing is staff and Kelly kind of hit on it is just, we are, we have a significant amount of stuff already that goes through things like municipal, like our municipal court that usually results in a fine, additional fees, non-appearances that then require police resources potentially to, to handle warrants and, and bring people to court. Our thought process certainly there was, while I think that the, the additional work on, on the previous House bill is important, it's going to continue that cycle of more fines, more fees, and no actual tangible resource for us as an organization to do something about that. And so the, the, the thought process with the behavioral health enhancements is there's a tangible idea there and a, and a place to take people, a place to help, to get people the help that they need in order to help combat some of the underlying or the root cause of the problem, right? And so instead of continuing that cycle of, of fines and fees.
So when we put this together, you were on vacation. So what's your thoughts? Do you have some thoughts on this?
Yes, I do. I think one of the, one of the biggest issues we're running into as far as law enforcement goes is dealing with behavioral health issues. And I think if we could focus in on that, it gives us a, an avenue. If it, if it was to see the light of day, it gives us an avenue to take individuals to the help that they need. That's one of the biggest issues that we have right now is running into, there's just really no resources out there for individuals who are having mental health.
They couldn't bleed over, wouldn't, I mean.
I think, I think it's, you're talking.
A lot of people who have mental health issues are addicted.
Or, yeah.
That's why you can't talk.
Yeah. They do bleed into it, but one of the things that we don't have is a place to take individuals who are having mental health issues, take them to the hospital and they turn them out just as quickly as you're taking them there.
Huge issues with that. I do the civil commitments for Lynn County. So when we, we get somebody that our, our police officers take in because they're a danger to themselves or others, and then they hold them, and then we have to have a hearing within five days. And we say, okay, traditionally, you know, 10 years ago or 15 years ago, they would have been sent to the state hospital, right, for treatment and, and not held for 180 days, even though the commitment lasts for 180 days. They're seldom held that long. They're put on medication, stabilized, and then released back into, into the community in, in some way or fashion, you know, try to ease them back in. The problem is, is, is there is no room. The state hospital is full completely with aid and assist from, on the criminal side. So they are held in the psych units of Corvallis Hospital. And, you know, we even do civil commitments and they're being held up in Portland, wherever we can find a bed. And they are in a rush to release. And I, and I understand they're in a rush to release because they have demand for more beds, right? There's a limited number of beds and there's a huge crisis of individuals that need, that need help, right? So I, I am not minimizing at all that that's probably statewide, one of the most important priorities that we can do as a state. And it, without a doubt, has a crossover between, and not to get political, but, you know, the legalization of, that we've done with a lot of our, our hard, hard drugs and the crossover between that and behavioral health and mental illness, which is why, you know, Oregon, I don't know if they're number one, but they're at least in the top three in the, in the United States for, you know, mental illness. So there's just not enough beds. They're rushing to get, to try to get them stabilized and get them back into the community, and they're not ready yet. And so it's a huge, huge issue.
Yeah, if I had to pick a side, I, I would go with the behavioral health enhancements because like it's said, been said that the bleed over between the two, the addiction and the behavioral health is, it's, I, I wouldn't say 100%, but there's a very high percentage of people that, that are in both of that, both of those. Yeah. And to be able to get those people off the street and keep them off the street for a while would be a help to Lebanon and it'd be a help to every, every city, every policeman, every firefighter in the state. So I, I put that really high on the priority list.
So, so what we're saying as a council is that we approve of the staff recommendation since most of them are the same except for number four. I know that you showed opposition to it, so.
It's fine. I'm, I mean, essentially, I guess they do the same things. The one thing that we'll be dropping from our, our piece, though, is also the lodging tax flexibility. I just want to point that out. But generally, I'm fine with the staff recommendation, too. There's a lot of crossover.
Do you need a motion on this?
We should. Yeah, we should have a motion from the council on this and then we'll, we'll vote on your motion or to the League of Oregon Cities. Yeah, we should do that.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the staff recommendation?
I move to approve the staff recommendation.
Okay, motion's been made to approve the staff recommendations. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes. Okay, moving on. This one was put on the, the agenda just on Monday, I believe it was. Ron and I were talking about this, city manager recruitment discussion. I think we need to revisit this and, and it's been hanging out there for a while. We had talked that we were going to reopen. Kelly, thank you. We're, and we're going to reopen recruitment in, I think, June or, or July, one of the two. I can't remember now. And it seems like we're just kicking the can down the road. So we put it back on, we put it on the agenda for tonight. Kind of what my, I'm, I'm going to pass it off to Ron here in a second, but kind of my thought process, let's discuss it tonight. I'm going to be gone in September. You want to be part of this discussion. And I will be back in October. We can make a decision then. This will give enough time for everybody to think about the, the process and how we want to approach it and whatnot. But at this point, I'll turn over to Ron.
Okay, so there's a couple of things you can do for, you can open the recruitment back up. We can do the recruitment through, you know, internal staff like we did last time. We could look for a recruiting firm to do the recruitment. We just need to kind of see what council wants to do here and where we want to go.
But I'd like to say, because I've said it, I guess sarcastically a few times, Ron, I'm sorry if I've ever made you feel like pressure that I want you to do it. You've done a great job and we appreciate it. And I understand that there's a need to move forward. So sorry if I've ever made it sound like gosh.
Not at all, not at all.
I'm not going to apologize for the pressure that I'm going to put on this right now. But this is the second time that we've asked Ron to step in this role for more than a year again. And I appreciate each time. I've been part of council each time that you've done this. And each time, I have to admit that I'd hoped that he would come around to taking the position permanently. Ron has lived in the Lebanon area for 30 years. Am I right?
Yes.
He's worked for the city for how long?
Almost 30 years.
Almost 30 years. Sorry, I'm not trying to put, put the, put the numbers and the math on it.
Old or young, you start.
I mean, he clearly understands our community. He understands the issues that the city has. I would really like council if there's cohesiveness on this for our city attorney and, and the group to start negotiating a contract if he's willing. So I'm laying it out there. I would like you to take this job permanently. I don't know where everybody else is, but I really respect you in the position and everything that you've done for us over the, over all the times you've had to step in. And it would just thrill me if you would take the position permanently.
Gosh.
You're making negotiation on my part very difficult.
I'm sorry. It's the second time we've asked the man to do this, though.
If that's, if that's an option, I fully support it.
Throwing it out there.
I agree. I support it.
Okay, sorry. You're the sixth city manager I've worked with and by far the best that we've had.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. And some of those names we all know. You notice I didn't say all know and love. And it, it does put you on the spot, but you and I've had conversations before, too. If we have to go back to the well, I don't want to do a national because I still want someone that can pronounce Lebanon and Oregon when they come to interview. Not like, what was that one city in Mississippi or something on the last go-round? I think that you're a good choice. You work well. Every time you stepped in, you've done an exceedingly good job. And yeah, I don't want Trey's life to get any easier on the negotiation, so.
Whatever you want.
You know? I'm just, just throwing it out there, Ron. I, I second what she says.
Yeah.
But if we do have to go back to the well, I don't want to use a national company. I'd rather go through the journals and the, the boards and that sort of thing locally.
Now, I think we have.
Yeah, I was just going to say if Angela can come up, come forward.
Angela, what's the, what's the difference between a, like a firm that specializes in this and a true headhunter? Like if we hired a headhunter and said, this is what we're looking for, go find us somebody. Is that different than like the, the companies that we've used in the past over a year?
Thirty thousand dollars more.
About integrity is probably what that's worth.
Okay. And I don't know. I've never used either, so.
A recruitment firm is going to do essentially the same thing. They're going to reach out to individuals, whether that's through mailings or email or personal contact lists. Headhunter's going to do the same thing, but they're going to just be a little more sly about it.
Okay.
Guess again, what I'm asking, is there consensus, though, to request that Ron serves as our permanent city manager or no?
I, I request that. There's, you're the prototype of what I would look for. I mean, you're grounded in this community and you've shown to be a good leader. So yes, if that's an option, that would be my vote, definitely.
Well, before Dave apologized for pressuring him, I was going to pressure him.
I'm not apologizing at all.
So.
Be nice.
Dude, dude, I went into his office and called him out. Don't worry about it.
So I would love for Ron to be our city manager. I don't know if it's something you have any interest in, but I think if he, if it's, like if you're thinking that way at all, then we need to move that way instead of going out for a, a big search again.
That's why I wanted to bring it back.
Yeah, that brings up a question, though. Go ahead, Wayne.
Which one's harder to recruit, a city manager or a city engineer?
I mean, we just saw what happened in Sweet Home, too. I just want to point that out. And I don't expect to ask the police chief to be a city manager.
As our engineer, because he's good.
I think we get double duty because he'll be overseeing engineering.
We just scoot him up from the bottom and replace.
My, my question's this, it's directed towards Angela. What is the, what is the legal process if, if, do we have to? Say he said, oh, we want, I want to do this. Do we have to go through the process and you just do the hire? Okay.
And Wayne, to your point, I think this is actually a really great opportunity if Ron decides to step into the role. I can just hit a couple of keys and it'll be done, by the way. But if he decides to step into the role, Ron is also, needs to be working on a succession plan. Because as he said, he's been here for 30 years and he's been doing this role for a really long time. So this is a really great opportunity for not only him to step into a role that would be really valuable for the city, but for us to bring in a city engineer and have Ron present as a mentor for a few years at least while that person is getting their feet under them, because there's a lot to learn.
Well, you're host. You know that, right?
That's a lot of good points we were making.
You're host.
I want to say one thing because it is, we all know that city managers have a lifespan of, what is it, three to five years in Oregon? Pretty sure that Ron wants to retire from Lebanon, so it would, it would, I, I would think that maybe that's something that's in the back of his.
I think that's an average, though. There's some that are six months and some that are ten.
So I can tell you right now that, that, you know, that, that, that's something, we try to steer away from any type of a contract that gives somebody, you know, that exit. But with Ron, I mean, I, I think that would absolutely have to be part of any discussion that we had with Ron. Because let's say we get five new counselors in the next two, three years, four years, right? And they don't like Ron. And now Ron doesn't have a city engineering job and they want a new city manager. Well, it's got to be something that's being considered. So we have to consider that. And I certainly understand from a professional standpoint, Ron, and I don't even know if this is part of his consideration. The historical, kind of historical evolution of the position. But it would certainly be a consideration that I would be making if it was something that, nobody would ever ask me to be city manager, but if they were, it would be something I'd be thinking of.
Has anybody asked Ron if he wants the job?
I think he's going to talk at some point here tonight.
Can I make a suggestion so we don't put Ron totally on the spot?
I think we've already done that.
I think he knows where we're at. And my thought is give him a little bit of space to talk with his family and make a decision, see what he wants to do.
Unless you just want to say yes right now. Unless you just want to say yes right now.
Unless you want to give us that yes right now, and we'll stop talking. I just want to put this out there, that when Ron and I talked about this, this is not what we've seen happening. So that's not what we were thinking, but, you know, I like it.
I'm sorry? There's a question mark at the end.
Yeah.
So, so I guess, let me start by saying, I'm, thank you for your confidence in me. I appreciate that. There's a lot of things I don't know. There's a lot of things that I'm learning. You can ask Brandon and Kelly. I learn a lot every day, and everybody else that I work with. But I would be willing to step into the role and, and do the position with a contract, of course, obviously negotiate a contract. Trey, everything Trey said is totally accurate. I don't want to, I work really well with this body. I work well with this guy all the time. We have a, have a good time, and I think we're moving things in a good direction. I feel like we're moving things in a good direction. There's challenges out there, and I would be willing to do that. So let, if that's the direction that this body wants to go, then I'm, I'm willing to do that.
Absolutely.
So the next steps would be what?
Thank you.
You negotiate something with Trey and HR and all that?
It sounds more like he tells us what he wants.
Well, pretty much.
We'll negotiate.
We wouldn't do that.
Actually, she tells us what he gets. I am so glad I put this on the agenda. A lot of love, a lot of love in the room.
I am honored that you think that way, and, you know, we'll work hard. That's one thing I will do. I'm not the smartest in the room, but we will work hard to, to, to do the right thing and keep the city moving in a, in the right direction. You've got a phenomenal director team. I mean, each, each day that I work with individuals, it's amazing what they know, and the integrity of the director team is, is pretty astounding. So the city manager is just there to, to kind of be a support system for them and to lead that organization, but you got a good director team that.
Given your background and engineer and that kind of stuff, is the role any different? Do you see, as soon as you do this, are you, do we need to start advertising for a new city engineer, or is that something where you kind of take co-duties for a while?
Well, I, I think you're going to have that anyway, because it's going to take a while to hire any professional position, at least if that's, that's what we've seen, right? So, but, but the honest answer to that is, a lot of things drop doing dual roles. I've spent a majority of time probably doing the administrative piece, and I've kind of left our staff, you know, alone, and they do a good job. But I've got some young guys that, that they need some guidance and need, need people to help teach them, and I don't feel like I've been able to do a very good job at that. Just not enough time in the day, so.
So is the discussion now switched to how, do we, how do we recruit a new engineer?
Sounds like it.
That would be for the city manager to do.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we can do that part. We'll grind through that. That's, and it just becomes an internal recruitment, or, you know, a recruitment that we go through. And we'll see, see who's out there. I know other cities have had a hard time with, with, you know, both finance, engineering, community development. It's, it's been a tough, tough road, and I don't expect it to be easy for us, but we'll make it work. We'll just keep going through the process.
And I will say, I'm joking about the negotiations, because I have a feeling that it's going to be pretty easy between, as far as when we start getting into it, it's going to be pretty easy with Ron and what we bring back to council and stuff. Because I actually remember when he took on the interim, and, and I suggested that he had to take a bigger, or I suggested aside the size of the extra year, monthly bonus. He said, no, 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 that's too much. So I think it's going to be ultimately reasonable, and I think we'll bring back something that the council will, will, will see as very reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, I have no desire to.
Alrighty. All right, now city manager for. Any other comments on this subject? Yeah, I think this one's a.
Thanks for taking the setup there, Michelle.
So we'll, we'll move on to, not interim, but it sounds like city manager's report, Ron.
We'll make sure.
Follow that one.
Angela, thank you.
So here we go. Couple of things on the city manager's report to note. We had another meeting today on solar, and I think we're making some really good progress. We hope to bring a work session back to the council in probably October, I think. With that, just to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at for solar, we're looking at ways to offset our utility bills, and I think we've kind of got a direction where we can do some substantial offset and possibly some community solar with, with a project out there. Obviously, the funding's still up in the air, but I, I think things are, things are looking good there. We've had several legislative meetings with, let's see, we went with Chair Helm and Owens of the Water Committee last week, basically to discuss our wastewater project, where we're at with that. We're getting out in front of different representatives as much as possible to see if we can't get some of that funding and help us with that wastewater project out there. So that's moving forward. Sean has been a great asset in getting those meetings set up for us, because, quite honestly, I don't know any of these people, and Mayor doesn't either. So Kelly, myself, and Jason Williams, and the mayor have been attending those and, and working through that process.
And the Transportation Committee.
Yes, and the Transportation Committee. Mayor gave testimony at that over at Albany, so to keep some sustained transportation funding in the state of Oregon, so we'll see where that goes. So we are hot and heavy on the legislative front. We had a regional, the governor's regional solutions team was here last week as well, so we had a big meeting with them, toured them, our wastewater plant site, also the Champion Mill site, and talked to them about solar. They are basically, you have DEQ, Oregon Department of Energy, Business Oregon, representatives from the government's office, the governor's office, LCDC, or DLCD, there was a couple others there. But basically, that's where you start with the funding, and really, all we're trying to do is get in everybody's ear, and so that we're, as the mayor would put it, the squeaky wheel, and we're going to keep, keep doing that and see where, where that goes. One last item, strategic plan update. We had the all-day session in July. I thought that went well. We have sent out an email and a survey to all the staff to participate in the areas, the focus areas that we had, and we will be sending out an email this week inviting multiple staff to different areas that we talked about, to have focus groups on those areas and get some staff input on that as well. So that's moving forward, and then I, the, when do we bring that back? After? Yeah, it's about October, I think, is when we, we show that, too. So that process is continuing to move, and with that, I can answer any questions that you may have with this.
Very right that the solar's going to be on property we already have, like at the, I thought that's what.
The one property we're looking at is the wastewater plant where the lagoons, the old lagoons are. It's a prime spot for those. It's land that's never going to be developed, and we don't believe we'll ever need it for a wastewater plant.
Good stuff. Yeah, that's a very, I was in that, on that meeting today, very exciting.
Yeah.
Very exciting. Walked out very encouraged that it's the right direction to be moving, so. Thanks, Ron.
Yes.
Any items from council? Alrighty. Any public or press comments? Yeah, yeah, we'll have that removed. Okay, so the next, oh, KJ, sorry. I just wanted to point something out. I got to reading through all the department reports. I was, I was really remarkably surprised how much the police department has come since I came on council. Remember when I first showed up, we were talking about the chief having to go out on patrol because we were so shorthanded. Three and a half years later, he needs four people to be full, and that's it. I've, twice now, in the last two weeks, I've been out and seen police responses, four to six officers at a time showing up. And if you look at the number of traffic stops, the, the number of arrests versus contacts, the quality of life that folks were talking about in that letter you read, the, partially early on, that's the broken windows theory of policing, and it absolutely works. And there absolutely have the people now that they're able to do it. I saw patrol car go up Sherman twice, not chasing someone the, the other day. It was, it was amazing. I just wanted to say, I know it's been a rough road for you, but you've done a great job with you and your crew, Frank, and I'm very proud of you guys.
Thanks, chief.
So, attaboy. Alrighty, thank you, KJ, and thank you, chief. Any other items from council?
He was gonna say something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, you know, think, think the, the staff, really. I'm just there. So it's mainly those guys out there, even when we're a little staffed, out there doing it, two-man shifts, which is pretty remarkable what they were capable of doing, just two-man teams. Now we are getting back up to, to regular staffing levels, and the more resources we have, the more we're able to do. So, and you're starting to see that with, with the more people we have coming on, so. And my hat's off to them for, for sticking around the ones that have, and, and I couldn't ask for a better, for a better agency to work with. Better people.
Good leaders always thank their staff, Frank, too.
Oh.
You must be a good leader.
I've had a, I've had a reason to interact with our community resource officers, not as an attorney, but as a downtown business owner recently, and I want to give great compliments. I mean, I know Dale is terrific, but it was Dave that came down and dealt with situations and did it in a very, very respectful, but, but, but firm manner regarding some of the issues that we see with our homeless population. And I just, I think we're blessed to have some of the response, responses that we have, both from the police and from our resource officers.
Absolutely. Alrighty, thank you. Any other items from council? There was no public or, or press comment, so the next, next scheduled council meeting, August 28, 2024 work session, September 11, 2024 regular session. Michelle, you'll be heading the September 11 meeting up.
I'll be here, yeah.
I'll be out of town. My daughter's getting married, so I figure I'd go down and do that. So if that's it, then this meeting is adjourned.